2020, apologies for being a few minutes late starting this morning. We're having some technical problems with our video that we're trying to get worked out. So hopefully those viewing online and at home are able to follow along with the presentations this evening. We do have three presentations scheduled for tonight and a staff report. So Mr. Saymanter, would you like to introduce our report and recommendations from DKMT?
I would. Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Thank you for the opportunity to make this presentation this evening. The last several years, Independence Power and Light has certainly been a city department that's been in a tremendous amount of transition as we have moved away from first coal to natural gas and then moved away from power production altogether earlier this year. Number of other endeavors have been undertaken at the guidance of our council that, like I said, have made this quite a transformative time in that department's history. But now that we've been through some of those transformations, I really believe it's time to begin looking forward. And in order to do so, my team and I decided to engage the services of the DKTM management firm to help us come in and get unbiased, third-party assessment of where that department's at. And in our shared goal of making that a world-class operation, how best to do that. So tonight, our general manager, Jim Nail, is going to just give a quick introduction of our firm and then our firm will run through our presentation. So Jim, I might go ahead and flip to you and let you introduce our team.
Evening, Mayor, council members. With us virtually tonight, we have Don Harker and Heather Bailey from DKMT. After a couple of rounds of reviews and interviews, DKMT was the firm selected for this engagement. We went through the month of May and June. We went through and did a number of interviews and document reviews. And this report tonight is a result of their recommendations. So, Don, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Jim. Thank you, council members, City of Independence, for giving us the opportunity to report on our recommendations and the results of our efforts to date. First of all, who are we? We're a team of experienced professionals who have worked together on numerous engagements, primarily at Navigant Consulting. Many members of our team have gone out and started their own firms since then. And we're collaborative on engagements as the opportunities arise. We have a lot of experience inside and outside the municipal electric industry. My experience starts similar to Jim Nail's in the nuclear Navy. I then went to Westinghouse. I worked both in the commercial and generation sides of Commonwealth Edison. And then spent 15 years with Navigant Consulting, having clients in the municipal electric industry, the IOU, investor-owned utilities, and the federal government. Heather Bailey has been leading our efforts with the interviews with the PUAB and the city council. She most recently was with the City of Boulder, Colorado, working on their municipalization, where they are in the process of trying to purchase the city utilities from the investor-owned utilities that is currently there and have the advantages that municipal ownership bring communities. Heather, do you want to say anything else? You're on mute if you're talking.
Sorry about that. I'm muted earlier. Thank you, council, for the opportunity to present. My background is primarily financial and operations. Similar to Don, I spent many years in consulting, but I worked for an electric utility, municipal utility, for 20 years, serving in various executive positions. I worked as a regulator for the Texas Public Utility Commission and a consultant for almost 20 years. So I am the other consultants on this engagement, bring a diverse view of the industry and experiences.
Thanks, Heather. We'd like to thank the staff of IPL and the city who participated on our interview process and shared their insights and concerns with our team through them. Everyone was eager to participate and their participation was essential to successfully carrying out this engagement. We found the IPL staff to be highly knowledgeable and very professional with their knowledge of the industry and eager to address the challenges facing the organization. So I am trying...
You're muted. You're...
The structured interview process relies on interview guides we developed prior to the engagement. And we use those to ensure consistency throughout the process. We use a standard operating model and through the interview process, we identify gaps in specific areas of utility operations. We then capture those gaps and then we make sure that we are aligning our analysis with the key stakeholders, in this case, the city, the customers, members of the council, the PUAB, and the employees of IPL. And then make an assessment on whether or not management and staff can implement the recommendations. At the beginning of this process, through the RFP process, we were asked what would be the goals and outcomes of this engagement by our team. This engagement could last, we were told, it could last anywhere from six months to two years. And so what does success look like? Based on the aspirations that were articulated by Jim Nail and Adam, you know, we believe that at the end of this engagement, IPL should have a clear and concise five-year strategy to address its immediate issues, have a detailed and prioritized gap analysis and actions plan to address its issues, will have a knowledge of its technology capabilities, limitations, and opportunities and recommendations to address them. Its staff will be fully engaged and supportive about the direction that IPL is going. You'll have a detailed communication plan to use with internal stakeholders within IPL, elected officials in city administration, and also the cities public at large. An ideal IPL will be seen as trustworthy, transparent, and a progressive utility by its customers and its owners, citizens of the City of Independence. So how did we do this? What's our phase one high-level review? Over a three-week process, we conducted numerous interviews, reviewed, I would say, over 200 documents pertaining to these valid areas of operation, as you see listed here. We ranked these areas using a scoring matrix where a red indication means there's a significant risk here and issues and actions plans to address those risks should be handled outside your normal management process, similar to like task forces and special projects. Yellow issues are those that are of a medium risk to the organization. Can it be handled with inside the normal processes and normal management practices? And greens are similar in that they represent a lower risk to the organization. We looked at these issues in terms of risk and urgency. So these are the results of our high-level review. As you see, there's three areas in red: administration, asset management, and business operations. Environmental management had, in our opinion, had the lowest risk overall based on the interview process. I do need to say that during the review on Friday with the rates committee, we make, I just want to point out two things in our report that need clarification. Under the administrative section, we say that council members use outside sources of information. We were rather vague about that. We were particularly referring to Indy Energy as a source of information outside the city that was surfaced during the interview process and used by some members of the PUAB and council. I also have to point out that under the customer service area, we make the statement that City of Independence will shortly revisit the AMI decision. Our interviews took place in June, prior to your decision to borrow from the utilities. And even before that time, it was a bit uncertain if you were going to revisit that decision. We were told that after one year, you may revisit it. So I just wanted to point out those two clarifications to the report. So in the interest of time, to maximize Q and A, we will go through our recommendations for the issues in red. There are numerous recommendations made throughout the report. Feel free to ask any questions regarding any issues in our report. To administration, we think the city's missing an opportunity to leverage the value of IPL. We think it's underutilized and undervalued, that there's a lack of a unifying strategic plan that aligns IPL's activities with those of the city's greater vision. It creates confusion as to what is the role of the utility and the role of economic development. It creates confusion and prevents planning for future generation. It confuses the issue on what should be your rate structure and what's the purpose of the rates. We understand that there's tension amongst perhaps the PUAB and the council and different members on what the city charter says as the role of the utility. Our perspective is that traditionally, the goals of utilities have been around safety, reliability, capital expenditures, things of that nature. Now Heather will talk in a little bit about what the goals are of some more progressive utilities. If all you want from a utility is have the lights on and low rates, you're not really taking advantage of the municipal aspects of utility ownership. And you should consider different ownership structures if that's your end goal. So perhaps through the strategic planning process, you might look at alternatives such as you could sell the utility. You could sell the assets, contract with someone for the sales price, lock in a low rate for, say, 10, 15 years, and that would achieve your goal if that's all you want from IPL. You could also use a model similar to Long Island Power Authority where they kept the assets, but they just contracted out operations to a third party. Similar to, you know, selling it, you lose a lot of the job creation, you lose a lot of the control because everything you want to do with the utility is now written in the long-term contract. Municipalization offers you the opportunity to use it for economic growth, to help steer city, to expand reach. For example, if you're going into the broadband business, it is easy to, much easier to tack on a broadband business in a municipal utility that you own and control than one that you are contracting through or one that is held by another owner. Heather, did you want to touch on some of the goals of more progressive utilities?
Sure. As Don mentioned, some of the traditional strategies typically around reliability, safety, finances, generation, and customer service. But as the industry's changing, and it's changed a lot, and as things are changing, I'm seeing utilities develop a little bit different types of strategies. Instead of calling it customer service, you'll hear things about the customer experience and how to strategically improve that. And it may be by adding additional services, having a diversity of services or a menu of services. It could be a strategy around culture and the workforce. A big issue facing the industry right now is succession planning because a lot of people are scheduled to retire. And so how do you attract the best and the brightest if that's your goal? How do you retain them? And so strategies around a corporate culture and workforce retention. Things like environmental strategies or sustainability, things that will, a great example is natural disasters. And so how do you have strategies that prepare your utility to deal with those? Technology and infrastructure. If you want to provide a data-driven organization, what kind of technologies and tools? Infrastructure improvements, do you want to have distributed generation? As you're looking at your future generation plans, what does that look like? Is it more local generation? Is it partnering with other utilities? So there are a lot of different things around the utility, from infrastructure to workforce to technology, alternative resources, and services, as well as economic development. One of the nice things about owning your own utility is it can be a tool for economic development. All of those things are things that utilities will get now. Now, something about independence that would be great in a strategic plan is, as Don mentioned, there's some disagreement between the council, city staff, and the PUAB as to what the charter says, the role of those organizations, and the use of surplus and the utility. A strategic plan could help clarify that and bring the parties together to a mutual understanding of what the definition of surplus is and what the role of the PUAB and different parties in the governance of the utility. So it's a great opportunity to do that. The charter and the Boulderan decision are two things that I think would, it would really be helpful for a coming-together mutual understanding to occur, and that could happen in a strategic plan.
Thanks, Heather. So in addition to the lack of a strategic plan, we noticed that there's a lack of formal policies and procedures with an IPL, that you may not be taking advantage of best practices in achieving operating results. Employees are long-tenured, they know how a utility business operates, and they're relying on their institutional knowledge, which puts the organization at risk when the experienced personnel leave or when you take an experienced person and put them in a different job that they haven't done before and they don't have institutional knowledge with that skill set. The lack of formal processes and procedures also robs you of consistency in performing tasks and identifying and measuring a continuous improvement program for the organization with dedicated performance measures. Now, we realize, you know, IPL is not an insignificant entity. It's probably the most complex entity within the city. It's in one of the top 100 municipal utilities as far as revenues and as far as the number of customers. So it's not insignificant, it's not a simple organization. There's a lot of moving pieces and a little formality to the operations we think would go a long way. We realize you don't need the bureaucracy of an Exelon or a large IOU. There should be some framework and some formal policies and procedures that you can hang a continuous improvement program on and help when workers come in and take over new responsibilities. Lastly, there seems to be a lack of a data-driven culture within the organization. Part of this is that just through changing out IT systems, there is a lack of data for certain financial reporting that we'll talk about later. But also, there's a lack of a data-driven cultures in areas such as reliability and things like that where you don't have, if you don't consistently measure performance, it's hard to improve it because you really don't know what your performance is. So our recommendations in this area are to thought about integrated strategic plan, collaboratively between, and have it be led ideally by Jim Nail as the general manager of IPL, working with the PUAB, city administration, and council to identify the strategic plan and address those areas of concern that are to the city. Our role would be to provide the framework, to develop the strategic plan, provide all the subject matter expertise and answers to your questions. But this is not something that our organization would write and then hand off to you and say, this is your plan, because it would never get implemented, there'd be no ownership, and it would be a waste of your money and our effort to provide you something that you don't use. So we think that, you know, it has to be your plan developed with your input. And then after it is developed, and it's a multi-year plan, as you go through different election cycles, as you go through different perturbations in the market, you can refer to your plan, modify it if necessary, but it provides a touchstone for going forward. In the area of administration, we noticed that FERC accounting needs to be improved, not only just to provide you with the financial reports you need to run the organization, but also to compare yourselves with other utilities as far as benchmarking and speak the language of electric utilities. You also have obligations to Southwest Power Pool and NERC with regard to how you account for your activities. And as we mentioned in the past, because you don't do accurate FERC accounting or if you are lax in your FERC accounting, you can get rate disallowances. And it's already cost the city about $2 million in its last filing, and that's on an annual basis. So when we ask for resources, it's important to keep those vectors in mind. It's important to create standard operating procedures and train staff in their use, enforce their use across the organization, as we talked about the communication strategy. And also, right now, your HR staff works across all three utilities and the cities. If you're going to reorganize IPL, work with union contracts and guide cultural change, you need some reinforcements, at least in the short term, we feel, in the area of HR support for tackling some of the administrative areas. As far as asset management, there's a lack of a formal asset management program. This leads to ad hoc management and systematic plans for improvement and affects accurate capital budget, capital improvement budget development. It also prevents lack of condition monitoring, reliability, or preventive maintenance programs from contributing and identifying what assets are important. And it also leads to a lack of information, which can lead to inventory shortages for spare parts, which can prolong outages and affect your reliability. So with regard to asset management, what we would recommend is, as you're going through the process currently, you're putting your assets into the City Works database. As you identify those critical assets, tie them to some area of performance, be it safety, regulatory compliance, cost improvement, customer service, then conduct a risk analysis for the assets to identify which are the higher priorities ones and what their impacts would be on the performance measures you've tied them to. Implement a condition monitoring program to monitor those assets, and then link the asset management programs to the budgeting process. To facilitate the lowest method for maintaining your assets and investing in them over the long term, rather than waiting for things to fail and then suddenly have both a operational crisis and a budgeting issue. Lastly, in the area of business operations, we think the budget process could be improved. Provide more transparency in the way it is developed for labor, overtime, allocated city services. It needs to consider the way IPL operates. Electric utilities are 24/7 operation and you have work rule agreements with the workforce, but your budgeting process does not reflect that. You know, the thought that there is too much overtime overlooks the fact that in some cases you have entered into agreements that have structural overtime that can't be managed away. So when there's an outage at 2:00 in the morning and there's a crew out there and it's outside the work, outside the normal working hours as defined in your work rules, you're going to pay overtime. And that's not something that a manager can manage away, it's not accounted for in your budget process. It's easy, and many organizations do the same thing, where they look at last year's budget for overtime and they apply some factor of 2% or we're going to cut it, we're going to make it 5% less this year, but it's not coupled to the way the organization operates. And that's pretty important, and it avoids misunderstanding and it identifies what can be managed and what can't be managed. We think documenting and reviewing shared service charges. Our initial pass said they did not appear to be unreasonable, but transparency and determining how they are developed is important. So in particular, you get full credit for them and they are not disallowed by FERC, for example, as it happened to you in the past. And lastly, actions for financial reporting are needed and also need to be improved. One is just the mapping of the accounts, as we talked with in the administration section. You need to map the accounts to the FERC database. That's utility operations, pretty much 101. And then that will allow you to create useful financial reports for IPL managers, for the city to review their performance, and there should be no surprises. Right now, you're in a situation where the PUAB, for example, may ask for financial reports. They don't receive anything and they think IPL is trying to hide information from them. But the fact of the matter is, there is no useful financial report to pass to them. But that is the bigger concern, and there are corrective actions being taken to address those issues. But we think that you need, and you have, we think that there's enough work in the organization size of IPL, now one and a half to two FTEs dedicated to the FERC accounting at IPL could be fully engaged. Lastly, power purchase agreements, you know, they're monitored on a daily basis by system operation, but nobody looks at the business aspects of them because due to personal retirements, that function is no longer repaired. We think that prompt action, sharing the knowledge on how PPA contracts are monitored and maintained throughout the organization would be useful. So our recommendations are map the FERC accounts, periodically document and review the allocation methodologies, formally delineate the responsibilities between city and IPL accounting, increase the transparency around the capital improvement program. As we state in our report and was surfaced during the interview process, it's very murky as to what happens to monies that are approved for capital improvement programs that are delayed, canceled, or come in under budget. We provide a list on an annual basis, and there's some capital from going back to 2008 that say they have available budget, but no additional information. We think through transparent financial reporting and more administrative rigor, IPL could report on a monthly basis to both the council and the PUAB what's going on in the capital improvement program. Redesign the financial reports to improve their quality and also design the end user in mind, get the input of the PUAB and the council on what they want to see in these reports. We've talked about increasing the skills and competency of the staff to better monitor the PPA agreements. And lastly, tie the budgeting process to work role provisions and labor agreements. So that was phase one, where we identified challenges and opportunities. Phase two, for the three areas that we've identified in red, we would propose to work with IPL and the city developing a unified strategic plan. We would do part of this engagement remotely, and we would love to hold and facilitate in-person meetings as the COVID situation and city rules allow. We would also like to work with the city in approving its accounting, mapping its accounts, cleaning up its financial reporting. We would improve OMS reliability reporting. Everyone in the, we interviewed, so a single person inside the utility, outside the utility, and city administration, the council, they said IPL is very reliable and great. And when we asked for the reports that are provided to the American Public Power Association, they did not reflect a very good light on reliability. In some cases, they reflected what would be called fourth quartile performance. And so this wide gap led to a question of why, how can this be? I mean, if you were actually having the performance that you reported to APBA, there'd be a lot of questions that nobody would say, their reliability is great, not uniformly. So what's going on there is there's a problem. So what's going on there is there's a problem. And it's not just one year, it's probably been for the last six years. And it reflects the lack of a data-driven culture, where somewhere in the process, the reliability data is not being properly recorded. This prevents the utility from identifying what its actual reliability is, what its worst performing circuits are, it touches upon asset management, where you say what components are failing are often, it touches upon what is causing my outages. Say a simple maintenance issue is causing me outage, but you don't go into any detail on what piece of equipment. It affects your reliability. So we would work with you to address that issue. And lastly, tying a formal asset management program, working with you to develop the program, the strategic guidance, coupling that with the FERC accounting effort and the reliability reporting effort, we think would go a long way to addressing those three areas that we rated as red and giving you a good footing for further improvement efforts. Heather, did you have anything else to add?
No, that was great. Thank you.
So Jim, I'll turn it back over to you.
Mayor and council members, that's the report from DKMT, subject to your questions, which I'm sure you have some.
Okay, thank you, Jim. As was reported, we did have our utility rates committee meeting last week, which is myself, Councilmember Huff, Councilmember Steinmeier. So I won't repeat everything I said in that meeting. It was, we had quite a bit of discussion, but that meeting is online for anybody who is interested in hearing that discussion. So I, you know, obviously, we'll open this up to the council for questions and comments. Just to do some quick math for everybody, this proposal, if we were to do everything that's being recommended, is about $240,000 to move on to phase two. So for the purposes of our discussion, let's just call this $250,000, you know, with contingency and just not digging into any of these numbers with any depth. But just so we can set kind of a baseline for the discussion, that's what we are talking about. I'll just say, you know, I was very impressed with the report. I was very impressed with Don and Heather and their approach to this. And in my interview with them, my personal interview and then their presentations that they have given. And I think it verifies a lot of things that we have been concerned about at Independence Power and Light, but also reminds us what a tremendous asset and opportunity we have. So with that, I will open it up to the council for their comments or questions.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I had a hard time following the presentation, to be very frank. I understand that your audit, I'm sorry, your finance meeting, the...
Rates.
The rates meeting was...
Utility rates meeting.
Was online, and I'm going to watch that. I think it's going to be very beneficial to me. I read the report, but I honestly could not follow everything. And so I'm just not comfortable even asking a question. But I do appreciate the report, and I look forward to understanding it once I look at that video.
Okay, very good. Any other comments or questions? Yes. You're pointing.
I might look like he wanted to say something.
Oh, yes.
I'll be last.
Okay. You get to go next.
Okay. I do appreciate the work and time put into putting this together for us. I still have questions regarding the relationship of their findings with the city charter. I really struggle with the idea that we're trying, I mean, I look through here, and there's conflicting views on our charter. I mean, if this is the foundation from which we govern, it's our guidance. This is, the charter keeps our city safe. This is how we're to govern. And if we have conflicting views regarding the charter and how the council views the PUAB and the PUAB views the council, and then how IPL sees us, you've got a lot of work ahead of you. But the most important thing to me is how do we build from a foundation that is cracked, broken, and is shaky at best? If we have so many views of the charter, how are we going to know what we're going to follow? I mean, is it going to change with every leader that comes along? Is it, I mean, every four years, are we just going to change it? I mean, I think we've got to start, and I'm just looking through it, and we've got to start with the foundation. What, how does the charter view our utilities? And I don't think there's a whole lot of miss or double speak. I think it's pretty plain. But, you know, I would love for us to have more discussion in terms of even your title in the charter. I mean, 3.12 says there's to be a director, not a general manager. I want to know why we have a general manager, not a director.
Jim's title is actually Assistant General Manager. I apologize for the misspeak. The council ordinance that was adopted a couple of months ago named Adam Norris, per the section of the charter you mentioned as the director of public utilities. Sorry for the misspeak.
Okay, so I want us to work through our problems. I think we're pretty mature and pretty smart as a city and with leaders. I don't know that we need to spend $250,000 to figure out where we're broken. I think we are smart enough to look at our foundation and say, it starts here. And we need to rebuild trust. We need a complete picture of the issues. We need to get along with the PUAB. We need to listen to their recommendations. We need to ask the right questions. We need to get them information when they ask for it. A lot of these things, I just don't see us needing to spend a great deal of money trying to have someone from the outside come and look at us on the inside and say, yeah, you guys need to be nice to each other, and you need to figure this out. We know what's broken. And I'm just, I'm really, really bothered, and I mentioned this Friday, and I'll say it again. I don't know who else you're talking to. You said there's been, there were interviews outside. Who else was interviewed besides IPL and the city council? Can you tell us?
Oh, no, we didn't interview anybody outside of IPL, the council, the PUAB, or city administration.
Okay.
We did not, we went to the Indy Energy site, and we found, you know, relevant documents as far as operations plans, strategic plans, but we didn't talk to anybody outside of...
Why did you go to Indy Energy?
We were, they have, if you have not been to their website, they have a lot of historical information, a lot of operational information on reports, and it saved a lot of legwork that we didn't have to ask the city to provide that information. We were just looking for factual information. We didn't ask for any opinions.
And we were, it was recommended that we go look at their website as an outside entity that interacts with the city.
Who recommended that?
I can't believe it. It's either a council or PUAB member just said, you know, you ought to go look at what they've got.
Okay. All right. Well, I would like for us to fix our issues internally, if we can. And I don't know what they bring to the discussion, honestly, Indy Energy. But for right now, that's kind of my concern. You can talk more about it, or you all feel free to appease my concerns or to challenge me in it. That's fine, too.
My only comment would be, you know, whether you use us or not, you, as an organization between the city, the council, PUAB, and IPL, we strongly recommend that you develop a collaborative plan going forward to address the vision issue, if nothing else, not the tactical accounting issues that we've identified. But just come to what is the, and we cannot give you what your common vision should be for IPL. I mean, if there is heartache using IPL, for example, for economic development, to bring a data center or some other industry to the city, you know, there, this would be the pro-growth people or the pro-growth outlook versus the no-growth outlook. And I mean, that's not something we can help you with. It says, what is the vision for IPL? I don't know for a fact, but if I would bet if you went back to 1901 when IPL was formed, and you looked at some of the statements that the founders of the utility developed, they would have probably used words like progressive, modern, help the city grow. But that may have changed over time, and, you know, that's something that your organization has to work on.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Right here?
Yes. You all sound the same. Cusman Hobart.
Mr. City Manager, what's the annual revenue? Like, what was the latest annual revenue that we have number for IPL ballpark?
About 150?
Ballpark 140, 140 million.
140 million?
Mm-hmm.
So in, not in opposition, but the counter to my colleague, Councilman Steinmeier's point, my concern with IPL has been, and I know Councilmember Huff has lots and lots of knowledge about this because he's worked there, but this is not, in my opinion, this is not a normal problem that we're dealing with. While I agree that we got to fix the foundation, my thoughts on that are, all due respect to everybody sitting up here, as smart as any of us may be, none of us have run or organized or formalized the process and procedures for a $140 million company. And while I understand it's not a traditional company, frankly, because it's a public utility, but frankly, that complicates things because we have a separate charter that governs it. We have the PUAB that sits somewhere in the middle. We have constant conflict. And, you know, this is not an easy task to run a big company like this. And I'm concerned with our ability. I don't know that outside or these guys or other guys, I don't know what the right choice is sitting here tonight. I don't know how I would vote if I had to vote today. But I frankly think this is beyond our general knowledge and expertise. I really do. I mean, no disrespect to anybody. This is a really hard task. And we're dealing with a situation where we have a utility that, I mean, they can't, they... Apparently no asset management. We don't have regular budget controls or, I mean, I can't even imagine how people have been able to make decisions over there on a day-to-day basis without even knowing any numbers whatsoever. So I think we're, I think, I don't want to say we're in dire straits. We're certainly low, and we're at a point where I think we need help as a council and as a city, sort of getting this thing back up to par and preparing it for whatever we want its future to be. So that's just my thoughts.
Thank you.
Since that meeting with the rates committee, I did some research, and I wanted to make a few corrections here. I don't know where, well, I know what happened, but in 2009, Sega come in here with a master plan. It was presented to the council, not this council, of course. It was updated in 2015 again. It's been updated every year annually by staff. I don't know why you couldn't find, well, I know why you couldn't find it because it was someone that wasn't real happy when they left, and they destroyed that. I don't know if we can get it back since we paid for it. Another thing that I did some little research on is the FERC accounting. We had FERC accounting clear up until the last finance guy, and all of a sudden, we've changed now to the other, which it was talked about then that FERC accounting is very, very important to utilities. You just can't push it into the power, to the regular city accounting. It's very specialized. I don't think we have any staff that even is qualified for FERC accounting. Do you have someone out there that's FERC accountant certified?
We don't have anyone that that's their specialty, no.
Okay, so it's kind of hard to be doing FERC financials if we don't have a person there that can do that. Another thing that I found that I wanted to go over, there's SOPs for everything at Power and Light, has been. I was there for 35 years. There's a little confusion here. Customer service does not work for Power and Light. They work for the water company. And so maybe you, as consultants, should go to the water company and ask them for that SOP rather than Power and Light, since they don't have anything to do with that. They're just, they collect the money for Power and Light. So we've always had a roadmap for the future. My biggest deal, we had a management partner presentation or consultant back in 2017 that basically has the same thing. We didn't fix any of it. We're still in the same place we were in 2017. It's now 2020. But, Mr. City Manager, I have a question for you. When this president, when we was talking about this coming on here in January, and maybe I mistaken this, but I thought that you told me that we was hiring this outfit to run Power and Light. They wouldn't be there all the time, but they'd be running Power and Light because we didn't have a director or a general manager. That was what the reason was. We didn't, I didn't ever vote to have another consultant out there. I voted to have somebody run Power and Light. Since then, you've hired this gentleman here, and so I don't see any need for a consultant. That's why we paying him all the money to run that place. And not taking anything from him. He has to have an opportunity here. He's got direction. He's worked down there long enough. He knows what's wrong. 250,000 bucks is 250,000 bucks.
We promoted Jim into the role of Assistant General Manager to be the liaison between DKTM and the staff because they are, as you can see in the middle of this pandemic, unable to be boots on the ground every day. We felt it was important to have a neutral person at the utility that most people within that department respect and looked up to and would follow their lead, which is why I promoted Jim into that position. The management audit, I take exception with. 28 recommendations, 22 of those have been completed. Two were postponed indefinitely, which was AMI. Four of them remain pending, a fleet analysis consolidation, which we've been stymied on, City Works installation, which is nearly complete, and staff morale and coaching, which is a big part, yes, you're right, of overlap of this report.
So it's still broke?
Yes.
That's exactly what I'm getting at. And just one other thing, and these consultants here, I don't know, I guess you've done quite a bit of munis, but I also traveled all over the United States putting up power lines, too. And I found very, very few municipalities that did this. They did preventive maintenance as long as it allows, but most munis don't have the staff nor the money, the assets or anything. They fix it as it breaks. So here at Independence, we try to keep up, always have, but you couldn't hire enough people to keep, to make this system bulletproof. That's all I have.
Okay, are there any other comments or questions? I'm just going to say, my understanding of the engagement of this company was first to do an analysis, which is what they have presented to us this evening. So, you know, the expectations of what their responsibility was. Step one certainly is getting a handle on what the situation is before they go in and start fixing things. I just want to say, from my experience on being on this council, what really got us our foot on the right pathway was doing strategic planning. our foot on the right pathway was doing strategic planning on, at the council and for the city. And I, you know, I take to heart all the comments made this evening, and we're going to get our first shot at this in a couple of weeks when the council gets together for our strategic planning session. And I agree with Councilman Hobart. I don't know if we need this, if we need these people, somebody else. I just know we need something because with all respect, and we have new people here, and I am so grateful to, for their interest and their willingness to work hard on these issues, but the fact is, we've tried to fix these problems and we have not been able to. So, maybe now we, we can. Maybe this is the right time, the right combination, the right moment to tackle some of these issues, but I would say, nothing that was I, well, there were a few surprises in this report, not a lot. Yeah, we know what the issues are, but frankly, we have not, to this point, been able to fix them. So, we're going to get a chance to do that. And whether that's internally with the assistance of some external help, I, I think that that is certainly the goal. But for our city, having a strategic plan, however that's created, has been an absolute game changer. And we have gotten a lot of, a lot accomplished by following that model. So, I would, you know, encourage us to be open-minded to thinking about that as well. Anything else, Mr. Neal?
No, we haven't.
Okay, then we will move on to our next presentation, which is our National League of Cities Service Line Program overview.
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the council, about two or three years ago, council elected to participate in the National League Cities Service Line Warranty Program. Our engagement with that company is coming due. As we've had a lot of transition on the council, we thought as staff it was important that the council be made aware of what this program is. Here in the next few weeks, we'll need to make a decision if we want to continue that engagement or not. So, tonight, Justin Steinbugel from that entity is here to give the council an overview of what that is so that we can have a more enlightened discussion in the weeks ahead about our ongoing participation in the program. And I will turn it over to Justin to present.
Great, thank you so much. And thank you, Mayor and Council, for giving us the opportunity to provide some updates on the program as well as some new initiatives we're working on here. First, I want to make sure, this is one of, I haven't done too many remote council meetings, so I want to make sure everyone can see my screen okay.
Yeah, we can, we can see you now. Yeah, Officer Turner, would you mind showing that door? That might help. Yes, we can see it on our, so let me just, if the council member, if you want to go to the city website and pull up the live video, then you'll be able to follow along with the presentation a little bit easier. Okay. We're all set for you now.
Great. I also have remotely from Connecticut, Tim DeLeo, who's our account management director, as well as Mike Tordowski. He's the Vice President of our water side of the department. So, they'll be jumping in here and there to provide clarity or context on the presentation as we go through. All right, so we are the National League of Cities Service Line Program. Really, we have an endorsement with the National League of Cities. We've been partnered with them for quite some time. And in addition to the NLC, we also are partnered with the Missouri Municipal League. We've been doing this for over 17 years, working directly with municipalities on this program. And over that time, we're very proud of our customer satisfaction, and you'll hear me continue coming back to that. Right now, we're 4.8 out of 5 stars for customer satisfaction. And again, just our biggest focus here. Two things I want, or one thing I wanted to mention was, we're also very proud of our Torch Award for Ethics that we recently won from the Better Business Bureau back in 2018. All right, and just some background on homeowners often not being prepared for home emergencies. So, we did a Harris poll recently and it found that 78% of homeowners believe that the utility should provide some type of education on repairs and preventative measures. And then, as well as 59% of homeowners, those homeowners surveyed, had a home emergency in the past year. And then the big number that stuck out to us that I thought was worth mentioning is only four out of 10 Americans can afford a home emergency over $400. So, that means, you know, putting it on a line of credit, taking out a loan, selling something, or the worst part, just not addressing the issue. So, the program really addresses these big statistics right here by educating residents, giving them an affordable option to make these home repairs as well. So, just high level, some of the program benefits. I mentioned this before, but we're the only service line program endorsed by the National League of Cities. We are one of their enterprise programs. The program doesn't cost anything to the city, so, you know, no funding comes from the municipality. And then actually, the program produces a revenue stream in the form of a license fee for the city. So, to date, that fee has been $54,000, which has been the total license fee, accounting towards the city. As well as something interesting that Independence chose to do when the partnership began, which is we actually cover, we covered the NLC dues for the city for the past three years. So, we just work directly with you to make sure that that fee is covered annually. This is also a free public awareness campaign to educate homeowners on these lines. We've learned, and at least I've learned through being in this role, that so many homeowners just aren't unaware that this line or their lateral lines are their responsibility. So, it can cause customer service issues when that homeowner, your resident's calling in saying, hey, you need to come fix this, and then to find out that it's going to be a couple thousand dollars out of their pocket. It's peace of mind for your homeowners as well and your residents. It's completely turnkey for the city. So, we take care of everything from enrollments to claims, you know, any billing. All of that is taken care through our call center in Chattanooga. And then, we also use local licensed contractors. So, we want to make sure that those contractors we're sending into your residents' homes are top-notch. So, we go through rigorous background checks, drop screening, and then just general professionalism to make sure that those contractors, you know, are the best in the area. So, the program at a glance in Independence, just to give you an idea of participation among your homeowners, there's over 2,000 homes covered through the program. And with that, there's almost 4,000 policies, which just means most homeowners are choosing to enroll in more than one coverage. And we found that 7.4% of your eligible residents are enrolled in the service or the program. And just to give you an idea, we typically will see this number start to plateau around 25%. So, there's definitely room for growth and opportunity there. And then really, what the program's really focused on and why it's so important for the municipality is, you know, money that's saved by your residents. So, to date, we've done 342 repairs totaling over 240,000 dollars. So, this just means that your residents saved 240,000 dollars from their pocketbook, and then it went back into the local economy through those local licensed contractors. And again, we pulled our customers and we're at a 98% customer satisfaction rate. Just high level, the coverage itself. I'll talk about the sewer and water line coverages first, just because they're very similar. So, it's important, I want to mention, we cover whatever the homeowner's responsibility. So, if that's from the meter for a house to their home and inside the home, or if it's from the curb stop, we're focused on covering that resident's responsibility. So, again, this program educates the homeowners. Every cover, or every claim has a coverage cap of up to $8,500 per incident. All of our jobs are guaranteed for a year. And what makes us a lot different than some of the competitors out there is we don't have any annual fees. There's no call-out service fee for a homeowner to get a contractor out there. There's no deductibles. If a homeowner files a claim, their price on the product isn't going to increase the next month or in general just because they had to file a claim. And then, no caps annually, like I mentioned before. So, if someone just had very bad luck and had to have multiple claims throughout the year for different reasons, each one would be covered up to $8,500, or $8,500 per lateral. All right, and then we have the interior plumbing and drainage, which has been very popular. I was taking a look earlier today, and homeowners and independents have really been taking advantage of this coverage, not just as far as enrollments, but their claims. So, there's been over $50,000 in the last 12 months just alone in this product for claims. And that coverage is $3,000 per incident. And this covers things like clogged toilets, leaky faucets. So, you know, those things that can be reoccurring. So, we see a lot of reoccurring claims on these, where if you get a lateral replaced, you're probably going to be good for a while. This is really where we see a lot of that come from. So, one thing that we've learned over the past couple of years, and I think that there could be a unique opportunity with the City of Independence, is, you know, our customers are having much more of an appetite for additional coverages. So, you know, we have our three, four products, but we're finding that if we're able to offer them other, you know, coverages, they're very interested in that. So, since it's a public utility with the IPL, we thought that, you know, showing you some of the additional products that we have available to offer your residents, you know, might be of interest. So, we use our same call center, 500-plus Chad, call center agents in Chattanooga. It's an award-winning call center. So, there are, there's an award called the Stevie Award. It's pretty much the Oscar of the customer service world. So, we're proud that we've won many of those awards year after year. And then that same contractor network. So, we make sure that we have contractors available to cover all of these different problems. So, I have the products here listed. I won't go through each one. We just thought that, you know, these were four that really made the most sense or could make the most sense to offer to your residents. And now I'm going to kick it off to Mike. He's going to talk about Serv Line as well as our HomeServe Cares Foundation.
Sure. Thank you, Justin, Madam Mayor, and council members. Thanks for taking the time or allowing us the time to speak with you this evening. The reason I wanted to cover these particular slides is, in my role as Vice President of Account Management, is to take a look at our partnerships and figure out, you know, what areas could we expand to make available to cities and municipalities, other products and services that may be of use. Again, these are optional programs, but we did want to make you aware of a recent acquisition we made with Serv Line. So, we talked a lot about, in the previous slides, about repairing and replacing water lines. And what we noticed was, one glaring area is customers are still left with a very high water bill after that, that happened. So, a customer would have a leak and would have an excessive water bill. And once that leak is repaired, they would have very few options on, you know, what to do and how to pay for that. So, this is a program that provides an option to the city to cover residents in the event they have a very high water bill as the result of a leaking water pipe. So, the next slide will really show a breakdown of the program. On the previous slide, we have 144 participating rural water utilities. It's endorsed by the National Rural Water Association, and it's really built on a strong foundation where this is a program that's backed by A-plus rated insurance companies and really is an enhancement of our existing relationship with the city. But there are great benefits to the homeowner. It provides financial protection. So, the way it would work for a homeowner is they would have this, this coverage through the city, and the customer would have 100% of their water bill covered, 100% of their excess water bill covered that resulted from the leak. It creates a tremendous public relations advantage, and especially in this environment, in this day and age, you know, customers being able to provide something to customers, especially above and beyond their expectations, really goes a long way. The other thing that this allows the city to do is to take a step away from having those difficult conversations with residents about high water bills and really chasing customers for payment. So, Serv Line and Home Serve, by extension, would handle all that administration of the program. And that really leads to high customer satisfaction. We talked about the, on the previous slide, about our, our focus on customer satisfaction and our call center, which is based in Chattanooga, Tennessee, and houses north of 500 representatives who would handle these with the utmost care. So, I did want to make you aware of that program in case it was something that you were interested in, but we're always looking at ways that we could add to the experience of protecting customers against unforeseen expenses that they, that they can't afford. And so, that leads us into the Home Serve Cares Foundation. So, for many years, and I've been with Home Serve for 10-plus years now, and from the beginning, we always looked for ways to give back to the community, and now we put some structure around it. So, we have four pillars that we've identified as areas where we can benefit the community. So, the Home Serve Cares Foundation has, you know, the first pillar of care, caring for people. So, helping homeowners in need. So, we allocate money to, to this fund to be able to, to help owner, homeowners when they have an issue and need a helping hand. So, these could be homeowners that have a policy with us and those who don't. We also have a pillar identified as caring for community. So, we make our communities better by supporting initiatives that align with our values. So, we put out, and we just put out one recently, grants every year that different municipalities and, you know, associations can come to us, and we will award these grants to communities, you know, really based on the, their submission and where we see the most value. So, it's another outlet for our utilities and cities to, to leverage some of the funds from the program, from our relationship, to help the community. Caring for Vets is another focus of ours. So, we have started to provide post-military training and career opportunities for veterans. We've been hiring many veterans into our, our contractor network and focusing really on how we can help veterans, you know, secure employment, especially in a tough market, and have been very successful in that respect. And the last is caring for good. So, engaging our employees in charitable giving. So, we're always looking for opportunities and especially opportunities with which the city is engaged to be able to, to contribute our resources and help towards it. But we also, we also look for areas around our local community here to, to give back to the community. But we also, we also look for areas around our local community, um, here to, to give back to the community and to really, um, you know, make this a, a great place to work by having meaning in our work and being able to help, whether it, whether it's through Habitat for Humanity or other associations. So really, in, you know, the, the headline or the bottom line is that, um, we have this foundation and we have grants to this foundation and we perform repairs to this foundation that, um, that helps fund repairs above and beyond the service contracts that we provide, um, to your customers so that we're giving back to your community and being really, um, a, a valued member of your community. So I think I'll, uh, I'll let Jason, uh, Justin take it back over.
So the one last piece I wanted to touch on, or one of the last pieces, was our marketing approach. So I just wanted to reiterate that, uh, you know, all marketing expenses, distribution, administration, that's all, um, done by us, um, here at the NLC program, the Serveline program. Um, there's no telemarketing, so residents will never receive any sort of call trying to engage them into the program. Uh, it's completely optional, uh, to every homeowner, um, and they would only be notified of this program through the mail, uh, a few times a year. Uh, the other big one is we would never mail any materials, um, that someone internally on your end has not, uh, uh, reviewed or approved on the more, um, on any campaign. So, um, that's one thing we're working on right now is, you know, making sure that the letters fit the tone of independence. Everyone there is okay with the messaging, um, before moving forward at all with the upcoming campaign. Um, and as I just mentioned, it's always voluntary for the homeowner. And homeowners have three ways to enroll. Um, we have our, um, our tool-free phone number, which will send that homeowner to a call center agent in Chattanooga. Um, you can always send that in through the, the mail with the bottom of the envelope, um, or just by visiting the website. So just to highlight, uh, the program as a whole, um, we're partnered with more than nine hundred municipalities and utilities right now, um, and servicing or serving over four million customers. As a whole, uh, we're consistent with customer satisfaction at ninety-eight percent. Uh, and then a big statistic I'm proud of is, uh, nine out of every ten customers surveyed, um, said they would recommend our program to friends of mine. So here's my contact info and, um, you know, if there's any questions.
Okay, thank you, Justin and Mike and Tim. Um, so just a little bit of history, Mr. City Manager. Um, this was a program that was, that we learned about through the National League of Cities and then through the Missouri Municipal League. And I can recall, I was on the board for the Missouri Municipal League at the time, and there was a lot of discussion of, on that board and among the membership of, if this was something that we wanted to become involved with. Um, and ultimately, um, you know, really every city just elected on their own, whether it was something that they wanted to participate in or not. And I didn't, I mean, honestly, I, I didn't really understand it. I didn't, um, know, I mean, I felt a little bit uncomfortable. It felt like we were endorsing a company over another company in a competitive atmosphere. But I have to say, um, other than the initial maybe confusion from the public that was getting a letter, I mean, they were, they just wanted to verify if it was legitimate, um, it's been a really successful program. And from what I can tell in our city, and I think the statistics we saw today, we have about seven percent of our population who's participating in it. But I can, to, you know, just anecdotally say, I've heard from a number of citizens who subscribe to the program, ended up needing it because they had a failure and were grateful that they, that they had it. Um, so, um, just so I'm clear and the council is clear, what we're being presented tonight, that it seems that, um, additional services are available and we might have the opportunity, if we choose, to add to what we are offering. Um, is that what we're contemplating is this additional, uh, some additional services that they may be able to offer? And just ultimately, not this evening, but at some point in the future, granting them the, the permission to go out and solicit, um, our utility users primarily, um, and offer this program to them.
Yeah, just in a very broad sense, our, our initial engagement with them is, was a contractual base and we're coming to the end of that contract. And so, um, wanted to use this study session tonight to make the council aware that the program exists, that we are coming to the end of that initial contractual period. Um, and the council in the near term will need to vote, as they did two or three years ago, whether or not they'd like to continue the current arrangement and, as you say, potentially expand the, the services that are offered um, by this particular entity within our community.
Okay, are there comments or questions from the council?
I have a, a few questions. How much money do they pay us?
It's a, in the contract and, and Councilman, I don't have that in front of me, so I, the, the exact formula eludes me, but we receive a portion of the sign-ups that they receive. So in last year's budget, it was about a twenty-thousand-dollar, um, revenue streamed to the city.
So we get a cut of what they sell?
The more they sign up, the bigger the city's, um, remittance is.
From what I remember seeing, I think their, um, envelopes or their flyer within the envelope, did that have the city seal on it? I, I remember it had the city seal and I was really uncomfortable with that.
The, uh, the, um, the letter and the envelope both have, um, city insignia on them, the city seal, which was at the time, the logo that we were primarily using.
And, I mean, I saw in the materials that we approved the, the envelope and, and, I mean, I, if I had known the city was going to be in business with a private vendor and we were gonna get a cut of whatever they sold, I would have looked at it a little bit more harshly. And I, I, I think I wanna look at it a little bit more harshly right now. I do not like the idea of our city seal being used to hawk goods, and that's what we're doing.
Yep, and that's the, the contract that we'll need to come back to the council and those are the kind of conversations that we hope to provoke so that everybody would have good awareness of what was being entered or proposed to be entered into and the comfort level the council had with doing that. So absolutely appropriate line of questioning.
Please, because we have a majority of council members who weren't here when we approved this a few years ago. And I, I would really appreciate more than, you know, ten minutes.
Absolutely.
Thank you so much.
Yes.
Real quickly.
Yep.
Go ahead. Councilman Huff.
I was just curious, are the cost of services, do we know how they compare with average regular local contractors or anything?
I don't have that off the top of my head, Councilman, I'm sorry about that. I just, we, we haven't benchmarked that.
Councilman Huff.
Yeah, I got the same thing as, uh, Mayor here. We got a lot of calls on the stamp, making sure it was legitimate. But, uh, same here, people that used them really liked it, said it was a great service to them. You know, they saved a lot of money of what the, some of these contractors are charging out there, change out, change out a line, you gotta take a mortgage out. So I think it's beneficial, but there is a problem with that seal being on there, I believe.
Thank you, yep.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, thank you very much, we appreciate the presentation. Um, next up is a presentation from the Diversity and Inclusion Task Force, Mr. City Manager.
Yes, Madam Mayor, uh, members of the council, this is the, uh, committee that our city clerk has been staffing. And I do wanna thank her for her work with that. Uh, the committee's been working on a tremendous amount of important issues. Um, they are, um, joining us virtually as well tonight, several of their members, just to give you a touch point on, uh, what the committee's been working on in some of the areas that they would like to contemplate moving forward, um, in the months ahead. So I will, uh, go ahead and yield to the, the members of the committee they're on and let them, um, engage the council with their presentation.
Perfect. Hi, um, my name is Thad McCullough and I am a member of the Diversity and Inclusion Task Force. And I'm gonna just start off our presentation with giving you a little bit of the, going over the overview and purposes and the activi- activities to date that the, um, task force has been going through. Um, I will be, um, joining me, and it's gonna be Helen Hurley and Meredith Parish. They will, um, continue the conversation and, uh, give more information about what we're doing and what we're talking about tonight. So, so first off, yes, um, the Diversity and Inclusion Task Force was organized by Mayor Weir in October twenty nineteen to address historic lack of diversity raised by concerned citizens and to strategically integrate diversity and inclusion into current-day city and community operations and activities. The goals and activities of the DNI Task Force, um, have been to, uh, form a group of stakeholders to review and provide recommendations to the nineteen eighty-seven memorandum of understanding. We, uh, review and updated, uh, the existing boards and commissions application. Um, we, um, provided feedback to city council regarding the MOU, um, related to diversity and inclusion efforts, past and present. And we've broadly defined diversity and inclusion and, um, what we believe steps are for moving forward.
In addition to members of the community, we've also had members of the Independence Police Department present at the table. Um, we have the leadership of Major Turner and one other officer who have joined us at the table. And they not only have that standing seat, but they've also fielded several transparent conversations around citizen concerns, um, relationships and their experiences that have, um, involved local leadership and law enforcement. They've also addressed several issues as far as data, um, that we've asked for. They have gone over policy reviews, information sharing and transparency issues that were raised in that memorandum of understanding originally brought about through the, um, Committee of Concerned Citizens. They have also preventively, um, been talking about evaluating and addressing IPD protocols in light of current regional, national events, um, including police reform, restraint protocols and eight can't wait. Also, much progress has been done, but we know that there's still work that needs to be done in the areas of transparency, policy, accountability, as well as updating some policies that haven't been looked at since, um, maybe even the early eighties.
Good evening to the Madam Mayor, City Manager and fellow council members. My name is Meredith Parish, um, uh, one of many members of the Diversity and Inclusion Task Force. Um, and so what we are presenting for you this evening are what we believe should be our next steps that really require city council support. Um, it was important that when we started our work back in the fall of twenty nineteen, um, we had some very focused objectives that were provided by the mayor and all in all, those things have been accomplished. There's, um, some major activities that have happened. We've established a great partnership, as Helen mentioned, with IPD, um, and we have, um, made some good gains. But in light of some of the regional, um, national and, um, just worldwide conversations around diversity and inclusion and racial reconciliation partnership with local law enforcement, um, we wanted to make sure that our efforts did not just, um, discontinue once the task force's main objectives were completed. And so while the task force was, um, designed again to have a clear start date and stop date, our next steps certainly require clear structure before function. Um, so many of you know historically that, um, much of this related work has fallen under the Human Relations Commission. Um, but the idea and the concept of diversity and inclusion, uh, requires so much of a broader perspective, um, a broader scope, um, as well as a more comprehensive approach to how, um, diversity and inclusion activities, policy change can be integrated into, um, the city's comprehensive and strategic plans. So what we are recommending, um, knowing that there have been several interested parties in the diversity and inclusion work for the city and the community at large, um, including the, um, community of concerned citizens, the members of the Diversity and Inclusion Task Force, members of IPD, the community at large, as well as the Human Relations Commission. Um, what we wanted to do is assemble an opportunity and a body, um, in which all of those voices had input and visibility into what is the proposed next steps, the operational structure, the goals and the future activities of the city's diversity and inclusion work. In addition to ensuring those voices had a seat at the table, um, we thought it was important to do some historic reflection as well. Um, many of us are, are new to this effort, some of us are even newer to the city. So it was really important that every voice, again, had an opportunity to reflect the impetus for diversity and inclusion work and why it was necessary to continue forward. And then secondly, we wanna make sure that the recommendation we provide to the mayor, um, to the city manager and to you all the council members, um, is for the best structural place, if you will, in which future diversity and inclusion work, um, should be housed. Again, allowing for that broad range of work and activities to continue. Ideally, we don't want this just to be another initiative. Um, if you look regionally, um, at some of the conversations with our fellow communities to the west and, um, as regionally, um, local communities were working through, um, some pretty tough conversations with local law enforcement, we really felt comfortable and confident here in Independence that we had gotten the leg up, if you will, and a head start on much of this work because of the roundtable, the partnerships and the collaborative discussion that we've already had with IPD for, um, now more than a year. And even historically, going back to the eighties, when the memorandum of understanding was first established. So what we are proposing this evening, requesting your visibility and support with, is a facilitated listening and work, uh, visioning work session with members of the Human Relations Commission, as well as members of our Diversity and Inclusion Task Force. Um, ultimately to set clear goals, expectations, um, a recommendation for the operational structure, so where it would be housed and the way forward for continuing the city's diversity, diversity and inclusion work. Um, I'm a very nuts and bolts person and I think, um, the task force agreed. Um, what are we clearly asking the city council to support us with? Before I go to those four steps, I will note for you, and this is contained in your agenda, um, this is a hyperlinked document to, um, what really is kind of the, um, um, framing, if you will, of the proposed facilitated listening and visioning work session. There's four clear goals and objectives, um, of that work session. And so you, um, have the opportunity to go through that Google Doc and review that. Um, and what we are proposing happens in that work session. But next steps that we would require and request your council support with, um, this committee, the Diversity and Inclusion Task Force, would draft, review and publish a request for qualifications um, to solicit proposals from qualified facilitators in diversity and inclusion visioning work. So our goal would be, after this meeting, barring any questions, feedback from you all, come back together collaboratively as a DNI task force and then present an actual RFQ, um, at the September eighth city council meeting for your approval. We would then work in partnership with city staff to actually publish that and have a period of time in which that RFQ would be live, um, expecting that those consultants, those individuals or companies that are familiar with this work have the opportunity to review and submit, um, their respective qualifications for consideration. Um, a part of that, we would also have a public, um, um, feedback period, not necessarily comment period, but we would make sure that RFQ with that framework of what's to be accomplished in, um, that visioning session be made available to the public, um, whether that be an input form or publishing it on the city's website. So again, we continue this spirit of transparency and community engagement. Um, so the general public has eyes, um, and, and voice into the process and the way forward. The second thing we would ask is that the city council would approve and fund a budget line item to award and secure a facilitator, um, just based on what we as a committee have determined in research to, to be true. Usually in this line of work, a facilitator, um, doing a qualified, um, visioning session, um, charges approximately five hundred dollars an hour. Um, initially, we are just, um, proposing a four-hour session. And I will clarify, um, this is not to try and, um, lay out the whole entire strategic plan way forward and, you know, top ten steps for what diversity and inclusion work in the city would look like. This is just so that we can have a clear understanding of what the recommended operational structure, where diversity and inclusion work should lie within the city, um, and the recommendation of an expert facilitator on how that work, um, should be, uh, begin. Um, the third thing we're asking for council approval and support with is to participate in that facilitated listening and visioning work session. Um, we believe that your voice and input and participation and support in this is very critical. Um, it, it definitely brands and sends a message for the community at large that this work is important, that we are. is important, that we are partnering together proactively before a situation occurs, if you will, and that all voices have value. All histories and experiences in and of this work within the city of Independence have value, and so it's very important that you have a seat at the table as well. And then finally, once we have had a chance to have the RFQ published for a period of time and receive qualified proposals, we would ask that you all would review and approve the final diversity and inclusion facilitated group recommendation. So whatever happens in that four-hour session, the work that is actually executed by a facilitator, we are hoping they'd come back with a recommendation of operationally where the work should sit, a recommendation of who and how many perhaps should be at that table, and then a tentative timeline within the next one to three years of critical action steps that need to happen to start engaging in this diversity and inclusion work throughout the city, again, with an ultimate goal of seeing representation in future iterations of the comprehensive and strategic plan. So collectively, our committee has done quite a bit of work. Again, we've established a great partnership with IPD, but we feel we're at the point where we could use expert recommendation on how to do this work right. I think we made the comment in the last Diversity and Inclusion Task Force meeting that the mayor and the council could, just with a swift decision, say this work needs to lie within the Human Relations Commission and give us clear directive, goals, and outcomes to move forward with. But we really feel like if you're talking about change process, and you're talking about human capital and building social relationships and connectivity in all levels of government and throughout the community, having multiple voices and stakeholders who have an interest, who have a history in the work, have a seat and a voice at the table. So that is our presentation for you this evening. We would definitely be open and responsive to answer any questions. I will highlight, we have Major Ed Turner on the line as well, representing IPD as well as several other members from the Diversity and Inclusion Task Force. Thank you for your time and attention this evening.
Okay, thank you, Thad, Meredith, and Helen. Are there comments or questions from the council?
Mayor, I'm just, is it just police? I mean, I expected like community, a broader, a broader scope, so...
So I'm going to call on our city clerk who has been staffing this task force for us to talk about a little bit more the breadth of their, what they've been working on. And, go ahead, Becky.
So the community of concerned citizens, just kind of giving a little bit of history on it, they entered into an MOU agreement with the city of Independence, so that was one of this committee's biggest tasks. And if you remember, Councilmember DeLucy, they did their presentation back in February, and they went through each of those line items for that MOU. So that was their biggest task, is going through that and seeing. And that MOU, it had a very big emphasis on IPD, so I think that's kind of where they had their first slide here, is talking about that emphasis with IPD. But this group altogether is looking at diversity and inclusion as a whole.
Okay.
So not just IPD, but several different affinity groups, if you will.
Okay, thank you very much.
So I might just share, and Becky, please correct me if I misstate this, or the members of the commission or on the task force, excuse me, who are on the line. So currently, we have the Human Relations Commission, which a couple of years ago, the city combined with the Citizens with Disabilities Committee. The purpose for that was we were having difficulty establishing quorums on some of our boards and commissions, and we did a lot of evaluating and putting certain groups together that had somewhat of a shared mission. And at the time, we concluded, and I think rightfully so, that the Human Relations Commission, while it was originally established to deal with primarily fair housing issues, it really expanded into a lot of other issues that really dealt with how every citizen in our community has access to services and amenities in our city, including individuals with disabilities. So it felt like a good combination, and it has been a good combination. So then when the Diversity and Inclusion Task Force was formed specifically to look at this MOU, but there was also some things that this council wanted to tackle, like getting more diversity on our boards and commissions, which required us to really look at our application and how we could make some changes to that. So they took that on too. And now, I feel that we're somewhat in limbo because this task force is, was created by me for a specific purpose and not by the council to be a standing, ongoing board or commission. And so I think this exercise, which the Diversity and Inclusion Task Force is recommending, would really help us to understand what the proper makeup is, whether it's to use an existing board or commission to create another board or commission, to make this a community-based, you know, to recommend that this be a community-based effort that doesn't report to the city council. And again, in our strategic planning session that's upcoming, you know, really, this will be another opportunity to think about how we can include this, which is captured in our vision statement of Independence for All. So, Mr. City Manager, what I am hearing this evening is what the Diversity and Inclusion Task Force is seeking is approval from the council to move forward in issuing an RFQ with, if I read it correctly, not to exceed the cost of $2,000, to bring a facilitator in to work with our various existing affinity groups, and the council, if they wish to participate, to just help us sort out where, how we want to address and incorporate issues of diversity and inclusion moving forward.
That's, that's correct. The group is just looking for the council support to issue the RFQ through the, my understanding and visiting with the city clerk, the work that this committee has done has, you know, addressed some of the old memorandum of understanding issues from several decades ago. They've taken a look at some of the current recommendations in light of the civil unrest of this past summer, but now they're really looking eyes forward of how do we engage in a community conversation about where do we want to go, and bringing in that third-party facilitator, they believe is the best way to have that community conversation. So they're really just looking for, at this juncture, the council's support for issuing the RFQ.
So if we were to give direction this evening to proceed with developing that RFQ, it's not obligating us to anything. We still would be able to look at what those returned before we spent any money or made any selection and say, and see if we received qualified applications to present how this workshop, I'm going to call it, facilitated workshop would, how they propose to conduct it, and who would be involved before we were obligated to expending any funds or engaging any other groups.
That's correct. There would be no financial obligation with this next step.
Okay. Is there any question?
I have, of course, one more. Where's the money coming from? What budget? Where's the $2,000 from?
We'll need to determine that, but probably out of our dues, memberships, training, and travel budget.
Okay. Because council goals is no more, correct?
That was eliminated several fiscal years ago.
Yeah, that's what I thought, okay.
So that's what's being asked this evening from the council, is if there is a consensus to allow for the development of this RFQ to continue to investigate the possibility of conducting this facilitated workshop on diversity and inclusion. So are there any comments or questions regarding that? Okay. Is there any objection from allowing the RFQ to be developed? Okay, then I think we're good to go. Mr. City Manager.
Very good, thank you for the direction.
Proceeding with that process. Okay, moving on, we have our staff report this evening regarding seasonal fireworks sales and use. Mr. City Manager.
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the council, I think this will be a brief presentation, but you had first reading of an ordinance last week, making some changes to the fireworks code. Wanted to give you a presentation tonight on the content of that ordinance in advance of your second reading and final consideration next week. So Chief Didmore is here, Michael Didmore from our fire department, to give you an overview of what's being proposed and get any additional feedback the council may have prior to next week's second reading.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. As Mr. City Manager mentioned, just kind of here to help clarify some points on languages, modifying the language of Article 20 pertaining to fireworks, and also within that, adjusting the dates in which temporary structures or the stands are allowed to conduct business during that time. So I know, I believe you've had one reading on it, but I don't know if it's in front of you or not. I can go over kind of the highlights.
Would you mind just kind of going over? No, I don't have it in front of me, but if you wouldn't mind just kind of going through the changes that are being proposed.
Okay. And this both pertains to both the sales and the use of the following items. You know, we've had things like sparkler bombs and sky lanterns in there originally, but some of the things that we've also have kind of updated, modified basically for safety's sake, really. Rockets on a stick, basically, the bottle rockets, missiles with fins or rudders for the purpose of achieving aerodynamic flight, single multi-shot parachutes with night effect, Roman candles, and clarifying some of the language in there. I believe in earlier visits to this article, there was some clarification, well, what is this, what is that? So we kind of cleaned up that language a little bit. This is all for the achievement is just basically for the safety of the citizens in Independence and property. We are looking at eliminating any firework that would not be fully consumed once it went in the air, eliminating, you know, the fallback of the trash or smoldering, you know, devices or something that might end up in somebody's gutter and dry grass or what have you. So I brought, I guess before I move on to that, one of the other things I mentioned was adjusting the dates in which these tents would be able to conduct businesses, shortening that to July 1st at 8:00 a.m. until midnight when we hit July 5th. Currently, we have about 10 days prior to that, so we looked at other cities and believe that this fits a little more into what everyone else is doing. So we can, if you have any questions about that, we can just kind of ask as we go along if you'd like. I have some numbers. I've looked at different medical calls that we've had this year, different, even police calls, nuisance calls. You know, the fire department, when we respond, we are responding to medical emergencies or fires, and we've had several of each this year. And actually digging through some of the calls, Roman candles to the face or mortar explosions, and, you know, bottle rockets exploding near someone's eye. So I mean, not just because it's a projectile, but we really want the citizens of Independence to celebrate their independence, but to do it in a safe manner, and we believe that this kind of gets us more in step with other cities and what they're already doing. One interesting thing that I found from Captain Garcia over at IPD is there were, this year, in about a 30-day span, there were 348 nuisance calls, and 56% of those occurred prior to July 1st. So it's, I think I've spoken to a couple of council members who can attest that aside from trash and burning bushes and that sort of thing, that there is a nuisance issue to this as well. So with the fire department, we're here, you know, for life and property. That's our primary concern. Really think that this is the way forward, again, where other cities already are, where I believe we were moving a couple of years ago. Really just think it's a good move to protect our citizens and the property. So that's kind of all I have. If you have any questions.
Okay, questions? Councilman Hugge?
On the, how many structured fires did we have during this time period?
During this time period, Councilman, it looks as if we had, on July 4th, we've had a fire where a firework hit and lodged into a gable and started a small fire and smoldered there. We had a grass fire, which was caused by firework debris, trash. We had another possible structure fire in the backyard of a resident. When we got there, we found it too was also firework trash and debris. We've had, I believe we had one, oh, we had a trash fire where that was accidentally set by juveniles who were discarding of some of their trash and what have you, so.
Kind of my problem with this is that, the reason why we passed this back in, what, 2010, I believe, was the fact that, just like Kansas City, it's illegal, and everybody's shooting them down there, and it was a burden to our police department. So the city chose to let these fireworks get in here. I realize that you're trying to change just some devices that are, you know, that you think that are dangerous to people, which I don't really have a real problem with. Shortening the sales of it, I mean, there's places open 365 days a year, so if somebody wants them, they're going to get them, and being, we're getting sales tax off that, I'd just soon be first selling them than I would be last. That's all I have.
And there comments or questions?
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
We expanded the firework ordinance a few years ago. It was restricted, then we expanded it to allow for a longer period of time and more type of fireworks, so that we expanded beyond what Lee Summit did, what Blue Springs did, even what the county did. And I received so many phone calls this year from people very upset with the volume of fireworks, as well as the loudness of the fireworks. And I believe because we did not have a public display of fireworks, that greatly contributed to the multiple fireworks.
No question.
No question. But in retrospect, I don't, I don't believe it's smart for us to be this island where anything goes because it hurts the citizens. And I can't believe that we get enough revenue that would justify the irritation and the fires. I mean, people expect public safety to do something, and yet when 4th of July comes, we just pretty much say, well, there's too many reports of nuisances, we can't report to everything. And so I would rather restrict, admit we made a mistake a few years ago, and I was one in favor of expanding it. That was a mistake, and I'm very much in favor of restricting it again. It was a mistake I wish I hadn't made, but I did.
And again, this is kind of speaks to two factors. One being what you are allowed to sell, what you are allowed to use, and then the other side being shortening that window in which these temporary tents can actually do business, and taking it from, you know, 10 days before they can even use the fireworks, the citizens who are purchasing, to something that is a little more reasonable that we feel, and is more online with some of our surrounding cities, so.
I have a question.
Councilman Steinmer?
Can you, can you tell us who primarily sells the fireworks?
I don't. I have, I have one of my inspectors here. I'm, I could let him speak to it. I don't have that knowledge. I don't, we, even though we take care of the licensing and stuff, I personally do not have that knowledge.
I'd like to hear all the nonprofits that use these firework sales as fundraisers and...
To that, there are quite a few non-for-profits that do, but how much they make off of who holds those licenses, I do not have that information.
No, I understand. I didn't, I don't expect you to, but shortening that time means diminished time or revenue for whatever cause it is. Do you have something to add?
Excuse me, Bob Fraser, I'm a fire inspector. As far as the sales go, answer your question as well, 90% of fireworks sales occur between July 1st and July 4th. So by shortening this six, seven days, it's not going to affect sales at all. It's... It's, it's basically going to be the exact same thing. The only thing we're going to be losing is the people that shoot it off early and come back again and buy again.
So are these, Mr. Fraser, primarily, I mean, are they fundraisers for nonprofit organizations?
We have 16 tents in the city. All 16 tents, they have to be run by not-for-profits.
I got you.
Absolutely must, it is not, it's not an option.
I see, okay.
And we have vendors that supply fireworks to these not-for-profits. Not-for-profits don't get sales. I'm just making up numbers. Say they made $100,000 in their 10 days. They get a percentage of that, of that, of those sales. The exceptions are the Boy Scouts, they buy their, they buy their fireworks directly from a vendor, so they keep everything that they make. They buy them at a reduced rate. It depends on how the individual, how the not-for-profit is set up, but the majority of the fireworks vendors, I'm sorry, not-for-profits buy from the same companies and get the same percentage based on how much work they put into it, how much effort they put into it.
Okay, thank you.
So you're, you're saying there's not going to be any, you don't see any decrease in...
No, not at all, not at all.
Okay.
And I don't know what the, I don't know how much revenue that creates to, to the city, I have no idea. I don't, I, I'm not, I'm not given the numbers that these, that these people make. I, I don't know how much money they make at a tent and how much money they give back to the city. I do not know. I do have the list I can invite...
Yeah, we'll find that out.
We'll probably hear pretty soon, so it's okay, so...
Yeah, we'll find out.
Yeah.
Any other comments or questions for our presenters?
I have another thing, too, Mayor. You know, it was kind of a, I got mostly a lot of phone calls from people lighting bigger things, and after 11 o'clock, I guess some people can't tell what time it is. I mean, there was a time and place for everything, but I think the most complaint I got was because of the smoke, and I couldn't see from here to there, mainly because the, the air just wasn't blowing that evening. But, I mean, we're always going to have somebody that's going to violate the rules out there, there's no doubt about that.
And a lot of it was the fact that there was no, like somebody said, there was no public displays anywhere other, I believe Lexington might have had one.
Yeah, there were, there were no public displays this year in our area, Jackson County, you know, surrounding the Royals, you know, places that you would normally go, Union Station, none of those happened. I mean, I do think that was a contributing factor this year, but every single year, we encourage people, you know, let's set this year aside, say, go to our public display, go to somebody else's public display. We really discourage people from doing their own displays when they can buy them 10, you know, in mid-June. People just aren't that patient. When they got them in hand, they want to use them. And so I have to say, in Independence, Missouri, we should have the greatest Independence Day anyplace in the country, and it's the most miserable couple of days of the year. Every year, it's miserable. I try to go out of town, because the calls just are, this year is not, I don't think it was any worse necessarily. I mean, I think all of us in our neighborhoods, I mean, it just goes on and on and on and on, all night, for days. We have people in our community who are very sensitive to that, we have pets that are very sensitive to this, and it's absolutely miserable. So I don't know if this is the answer to how we're going to get that under control, because, you know, people are going to do what they want, and we aren't going to, we don't, aren't going to be able to respond to all those calls or even identify where they're coming from. But, yeah, you can drive down to Lafayette County or the Lake of the Ozarks and buy fireworks today, any day of the year, and bring them home, so...
I, I agree with that statement and the statement that Councilman Huff made, you know, if people want them, they can find them. The one thing, this obviously is, is the stance that the fire department takes, again, for life, safety, property, safety. But again, this is not anything radical that's out there. This is actually getting us caught up to what everyone else has already been doing, kind of what Councilman DeLucy had referred to.
One more thing, 4th of July was a Saturday this year. Traditionally, the last 10 years, we've done this. When the 4th of July is on a Friday or Saturday, sales are out. Next week is on a Sun, next year it's on a Sunday, we're not going to have, and if we have the city display again, I mean, people are going to go to the display on Saturday, and Sunday will be back to normal. So this year was, was the exception, because so many different things have gone on this year, but I see it going back more to normalcy next year.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? I'll be out of town. Hopefully. I didn't get to go out of town this year.
Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you very much, I appreciate it. Mr. City Manager, anything else this evening?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Okay, we're adjourned.